Called the order, the February 6th, 2023, Planning and Transportation Commission meeting. And as we do, please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Present.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Present.
Commissioner Garvey?
Present.
Vice Chair Clements?
Present.
And Chair Yakuponi?
Present. Good evening, everyone. For those here in the audience and those who are joining over our webcast or by phone, as we start out each meeting, the opportunity, we're going to go to Agenda Item 1. Thank you, or I guess it's number four. We're going to start with a public comment. And this is the opportunity for members of the public who have a comment on items not on this evening's agenda to speak. The Commission may briefly respond to statements made or questions posed as allowed by the Brown Act, Government Code, Section 54954.2. However, the Commission's general policy is to refer items to staff for attention or have a matter placed on a future Commission agenda for a more comprehensive action or report. So is there anyone in the audience tonight that would like to make a public comment, not on tonight's agenda? Okay, and seeing none. Lynette, are there any callers indicating they'd like to speak?
Yes, we have. We have Debbie and Gary.
Okay. Good evening, Debbie and Gary. And can I just check, is this an item that is not on tonight's agenda?
It's not on tonight's agenda, and only I will speak on this one. I'm Debbie Baldocki, a resident of San Carlos.
Good evening, Debbie.
Yes, I just wanted to comment on the notice requirement for some of the meetings. In the agenda packets for one of the items, the public notice was published in a publication called The Enquirer, and that's a very obscure publication. And many of us who were interested in topics on tonight's calendar did not find out about this meeting until the very last minute. So to the extent that you and the city can consider using another publication to provide public notices that are more well-read, such as the San Mateo Daily Journal, we would appreciate that, because we would hate to miss a meeting like this. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Debbie. And Lynette, are there any other hands raised or people that would like to speak?
There are no more.
Very good, thank you. Our next agenda item is approval of minutes. We have two sets of minutes here for this evening. The first is the minutes of the Planning and Transportation Commission meeting of January 3rd, 2023. Let me check with colleagues to see if there are any edits or comments that you'd like to flag. And seeing none, I entertain a motion to approve.
I move that we approve the minutes from the Planning and Transportation Commission meeting of January 3rd, 2023.
I second that. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
Chair Yakuponi?
Yes. Thank you. And the second set of minutes is from our last meeting, consideration to approve the minutes of the Planning and Transportation Commission meeting of January 17, 2023. Are there other comments or edits or questions? Commissioner Castaneda, please.
I think there's a typo on packet page 15 that I really think should be corrected. It's in the first line. You need to change the spelling of borders. It's B-O-R-D-E-R-S, not borders. Thank you.
Any others? Very good. Do we have a motion to approve?
I move that we approve the minutes from the Planning and Transportation Commission meeting of January 17th, 2023, with the edits noted by Commissioner Castaneda.
I'll second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Yakuponi?
Yes. Thank you very much. So now we'll move to new business, Item 6A in the agenda, where the Planning and Transportation Commission is being asked to consider a resolution recommending the city council adopt an ordinance amendment to the City of San Carlos Municipal Code, Section 18, to regulate laboratories with biosafety levels. And I think we have a presentation from Lisa Costa-Sanders.
Thank you. Yes, good evening. Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner. I'll be giving the staff presentation this evening. All right. As the Planning Commission is aware, we are seeing a dramatic increase in new life science biotechnology development in San Carlos as well as throughout the peninsula. The city council, with the recently adopted general plan update, included an action item to prepare regulations that address biosafety levels, or BSL, for new life science uses to ensure a healthy and safe community. There are several sub-industries within the life science and biomedical industry, and that includes biotechnology, pharmaceuticals, medical devices, medical equipment, digital healthcare, and genomics. And what area we're discussing this evening is focusing on the biotechnology industry that may require the use of biosafety labs as part of their business. So the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, or CDC, and the National Institute of Health defines four biosafety levels for lab space as BSL 1 through BSL 4, with BSL 4 requiring the highest or maximum level of containment. There are no BSL 4 labs in California. The levels are used to classify microbiological and biomedical laboratories. The BSL levels include regulations to protect workers, the environment, and the public, and to regulate how hazardous materials are disposed and transported. So in San Carlos, we do not currently have regulations specific to biosafety levels or labs. The San Carlos Airport Safety Zone 3, which is shown here in dark purple, does not allow biosafety level labs 3 and 4. And you see, that's a very limited area, that dark purple. We did some research on neighboring jurisdictions in San Mateo County, and we found that BSL labs are generally permitted in most zoning districts that are commercial and industrial in nature, with the cities of Burlingame and Millbrae prohibiting BSL 3 and 4 within the San Francisco Airport Safety Zone 3, very similar to what we just described with the San Carlos Airport Safety Zone. Other cities surveyed in San Mateo County do not have separate regulations or just simply defer to the other regulations, like the county environmental health department. Also, within the Bay Area, we found several jurisdictions that regulate BSL labs, including the city of Fremont, which requires a zoning administrator permit. But we did not find a jurisdiction in San Mateo County or the Bay Area that expressly prohibits BSL 3 labs. And then just to give you a bit of an overview on the regulatory agencies, BSL labs are highly regulated. There are numerous county, state, and federal agencies that have oversight over BSL labs. For example, County Environmental Health manages the disposal of medical and hazardous waste. Although there's a lot of agencies that regulate, there's not one stop shop for these regulations or a list of regulatory agencies. And often, due to proprietary or security reasons, an inventory of labs is not readily available online. The Federal Select Agent Program is jointly comprised of the Center for Disease Control and Prevention, and they regulate, the CDC regulates who can process certain agents and verifies facilities prior to allowing use of certain agents. So we have received several public comments on this topic. A few have support the proposed regulations of prohibiting BSL labs, and we've also received comments expressing concern. On behalf of the business industry, commenters suggest requiring a conditional use permit for BSL 3 labs. Allowing BSL 3 labs provides, they indicate that allowing BSL 3 labs provides flexibility and the ability for businesses to expand their research. Life science firms typically leave spaces for longer periods of time, and prohibiting BSL 3 labs in San Carlos may put the city in a competitive disadvantage in the marketplace, as no other Bay Area community prohibits these. It should be noted that BSL 3 labs are expensive to operate and maintain, and are typically established only when needed and then decommissioned when the trial is complete. So we have presented for you this evening proposed changes to the commercial and industrial zoning districts. That includes adding a zoning definition of biosafety level, allowing BSL 1 and 2 laboratories by right, with no further planning review required. However, other outside agencies and building permits would still be required. Modify the purpose of zoning districts where research and development uses are permitted to expressly prohibit BSL 3 and 4 laboratories. Modify the research and development use definition to expressly prohibit BSL 3 and 4 laboratories. And this is a graphic, as you can see, what the regulations we just discussed. No additional planning review required for BSL 1 and 2, and then BSL 3 and 4 would not be allowed. And then this is the recommendation to adopt a resolution recommending city council adopt an ordinance amending the municipal code to prohibit facilities biosafety levels 3 and 4. And if recommended by the Planning and Transportation Commission this evening, the city council would consider your recommendation at its February 27th meeting. And we have a team with us this evening to help answer any of your questions. Al Savay, Community Development Director, myself, Megan Woolley-Aldstall, our senior planner in the Long Range Division, Carol Johnson's a planning director with Good City Company, she's on remote, and Carla Baragno, former vice president of site services with Genentech. So with that, I'd be happy to try to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Lisa. I'm sure there's questions here amongst fellow commissioners. Why don't we do as we traditionally do and start with clarifying points, things that didn't come out or you're not sure of? So we can maybe take a question or two and loop around until everyone is feeling like they've had their questions answered. So Vice Chair Clements?
Thank you, Chair. I have a number of questions, so I'll do a couple, and then we'll keep going and we'll loop back. So I guess I have two questions. From the staff report, I did not get a good feeling for two questions, which is, when BS Level 3 labs are put in place, what's their typical proximity to other uses? And does San Carlos not look like those locations? So for instance, you know, is it in the middle of an industrial area where there's at least a mile until you reach any other residential? And that's not possible in our community? Or, you know, does anyone have some examples for other Level 3 facilities and what that looks like?
Yeah, I'm not sure we have that specific characteristics that we could provide. I know we have a couple other staff members that have done a lot of research into those areas, but I believe in San Francisco and as well as South San Francisco, there's been occasions where BSL 3 labs have been utilized, and those were in more of a campus environment. And I don't know, Carol, if you're online, would you like to expand on any of your research?
Yes, we weren't able to locate the specific address for BSL 3 facilities, as was mentioned, because they're commissioned and then decommissioned. Trying to find an up-to-date list was very difficult. But in the city of San Francisco, for example, a BSL 3 lab is allowed with a conditional use permit in mixed-use areas. So in the same areas where there would be office uses and even multifamily uses. So many jurisdictions allow them in a mixed-use setting, and they don't require separation such as from other, what you might call, sensitive uses.
Okay, that's very helpful, thank you. And then my second question, just starting out with the public comment that San Carlos may be out of step with the market demand for facilities if we do ban Level 3 lab space. So I'm wondering if we could get more information. Is this, I mean, how important is this to companies that could be citing here? Is this an unusual request? Is this something that, like, everyone's talking about doing a 3? It's just a matter of when? I really don't have a good feel for how much of a disadvantage we'd be at and how important that is.
Right, so at the moment, there's very few BSL 3 labs. My understanding is about 1% of the lab space are BSL 3s. But I think the issue, and you'll have other people maybe speak to it more eloquently, is that when a business or, you know, these life science businesses choose where to locate, they're looking at kind of staying there for the next 10 years or so and putting in investment in that space. So the concern we've heard is that businesses may choose to locate elsewhere in a jurisdiction that does not have those types of restrictions if we choose to prohibit it. And so that's the concern we've heard, but I don't know, you know, how much that's going to impact the market.
Right. Thank you. I will defer now. Thanks, Chair.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Commissioner Roof? Yes. First, I'll disclose that I work for a pharmaceutical company, Genentech, but I don't think that will impact my judgment on this. My question is, Redwood City, San Mateo, South San Francisco defer to the county and state regulations. Do those regulations prevent BSL 3 or 4 laboratories?
They do not. The only regulation that I'm aware of from another agency that would prevent it would be the airport compatibility zones.
My second question has to do with the wording of banning the BSL 3 and 4 facilities. And I'm wondering why that language is used as opposed to something that prevents the use of Level 4, for instance, ideological agents? Because one might imagine a company would want to build a Level 3 capable space and use it for Level 2 work. And so why would we want to ban that?
Certainly. Carol, do you want to talk about any of your research and similar definitions?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Commissioner. The, we did a research of different agencies, different jurisdictions that had adopted regulations specific to biosafety levels, and the preponderance used the phrase "facility." It would be also easy to, and that was just, we just incorporated "facility" because of the preponderance of other jurisdictions that use that phrasing. Other jurisdictions have used reference specifically "agents," or I think the city of Fremont was one that used a reference to agent rather than facility. And that would, that could be part of your deliberation and a recommendation to modify the text if you so choose.
Great, thank you. Commissioner Castaneda?
I had the same question about using the word "lab" versus the vectors themselves. So I think that's interesting. I believe I checked, but are there only, to your knowledge, seven Level 3 labs in the entire Bay Area? Does anyone know that?
Yeah, so that's difficult information to find, you know, from time-sensitive information, but that's the best research we were able to locate.
Okay. So the percent, and you said the percentage was about 1% of labs that would be interested in Level 3?
I think that's at any given time, correct.
Okay. And with respect to San Francisco and the other areas that are allowing Level 3, do they have a locally administered inspection plan, or who inspects those labs?
Carol, did you find that in your research? Can you see if she's still on?
I'm sorry, I thought I unmuted myself. In the zoning regulations for the city of San Francisco, there is no prescribed annual inspection.
Okay. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Let's see, I think Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair. I think my question may have been answered. I recognize that you don't have access to an inventory. I'm curious if in your colleagues' experience, if they know of any BSL 3 labs that have ever been commissioned on the peninsula. I'm just thinking of Stanford, and I'm thinking of COVID, and I'm curious if anyone has had any of that experience at all.
Carla, that might be best suited for you. Thank you.
Good evening. And as Lisa mentioned, I'm working with staff, and I'm the former vice president of site services at Genentech. So for seven years, I oversaw all of their real estate, strategic planning, site operations, including environmental health and safety, et cetera. And formerly, just retired from a global engineering position. So in response to your question, these labs are rare. I am aware right now of a lab in San Francisco. I'm not at liberty to say which one. And they actually follow very stringent guidelines and regulations, as well as design conditions when they were designing this lab. I can speak from experience at Genentech. At one point in the 90s, we actually did build and commission that type of lab for a particular research program for HIV. When that lab was no longer needed, it was actually decommissioned. And so there are very clear and specific guidelines around the design and commissioning of these labs. And when combined with the design controls and the containment, along with administrative processes with regards to training and SOPs, you know, these labs are designed to be operated in a very safe way. I don't know if that answered your question?
Thank you, that's very helpful.
Good, thank you, everyone. Okay, a couple for me, and then we can come back around. I guess, two different paths. One is, when I look at this airport compatibility zone and the, kind of this dotted purple line, there doesn't appear to be a lot of San Carlos that is not within that purple dotted line with regard to areas where we're anticipating development. So, you know, not looking for any square, you know, acres or anything. Is that generally correct, that the airport zone, which by default excludes 3 and 4, covers pretty much all of the San Carlos development arena?
Right, so the area is designated as Compatibility Zone 3, covers a portion of the Palo Alto Medical Foundation site, public storage, looks like it hits a little bit of maybe recology over there, and the Garden Supply Center, I just forgot the name of it, Linkso. Thank you. And then, as you're looking south, it looks like it's touching REI, and then a little bit of the properties along Skyway.
Okay, so I think you've just corrected me by saying it's not in that purple dotted line, it's the darker shaded areas.
The dark shade purple with the 3 circle around it.
I just didn't, I didn't track.
The purple dotted line green is Compatibility Zone 6, and there's no restrictions relating to that, yes.
Okay, thank you. That makes more sense. So I guess what I'm curious about is, balanced report, but I think in general, I've taken that there are regulations in place, San Mateo County or other cities don't see a need to regulate this, and yet the recommendation is to do 1 and 2 and not 3. So what can maybe some, you or someone could say, how did we get there? What's the thinking?
Well, I know there's been some community concern over biosafety Level 3 businesses, lab space, and then we did receive some direction from the city council with adoption of that general plan policy to consider prohibiting biosafety Level 3.
Okay, and I'll say to put you on the spot, is there logic, like, is there a thought behind it's, there's a track record with Level 3, or what, why the cutoff there? Why not the cutoff at 1? Just 1, but not 2?
Right, so 1 and 2 do not have that same level of safety protocols that are necessary, do not have the different agents that are regulated, and so there seems to be less of a concern over the level of lab space and containment with those. And then when you get to 3, it's kind of stepping it up quite a bit.
Okay, thank you.
I think your question was any issues, and we're not aware of any issues.
Okay, good. Vice Chair Clements?
Thank you, Chair. Building on the chair's question, so I know city council directs us to think through things, but then staff and experts come together and figure out what they think the best proposal is. So why propose banning Level 3 instead of suggesting a strict CUP with a strict monitoring program? What were the pros and cons there?
Well, when we initially started to look at the issues, and as was noted earlier, it's just 1% of the, you know, usage of these facilities in the area. So we thought that from an economic impact, we didn't believe that it was significant. In your packet, you've received a couple of letters from various groups, from the chamber, from another group, and you may have heard from some of the local developers that are considering this, and they do have some concerns with regard to the economics of it. But in our recommendation, we, in weighing the economic issues with regard to community safety and community concern, we felt that this was a recommendation that we felt good moving forward with to the Planning Commission, and that we didn't feel that it had such a significant impact. a significant impact on marketplace dynamics. And so that's what you have before you. And as Lisa mentioned, we're open to learning along with the Planning Commission. And if you have some other ideas or you need additional information, we can certainly provide that.
Thank you, Al. I had another question, which is just how our regulations would interact with the many other regulations that are out there. From just the little bit that I gathered from the memo and your presentation, it seems like the other bodies that regulate this type of facility, they may regulate, for instance, just the disposal, or just, you know, the use of one chemical, or something like that. So can you help, you know, improve my understanding on that? Is it true that there would be, like, why would we want to put in a regulation, and how would that work with the other regulations that are there? What was the need for us to also regulate?
Certainly. So from our research, it appears that most of these regulations are kind of independent, depending on what you're doing. So are you going to be disposing of medical waste? If the answer is yes, then you go to county environmental health. If the answer is no, you don't need to do that step, right? So it's very specific to kind of the operations, the agents, and what you're dealing with. There's a lot of regulations from CDC and OSHA that definitely govern for, you know, protection of the employees on site. So I think if the city were to regulate, one thing that could happen is trying to have that kind of umbrella where we receive all of that information, we receive, you know, a statement and all the reports that said, yes, we've complied with all of these other regulations. And they can have, if the lab's continuous, they can have annual reporting to show that, yes, they've committed to doing all those things. And then that way, the public maybe has some more reassurance that there's another check that's happening. So that's one area. The only other concern maybe is that some jurisdictions, I think, in the East Coast have committees that review this, and we just don't have that level of expertise, right, in the staff, or to have that level of a committee. But it may be something that the county may want to explore, since there's so many in San Mateo County, is establishing that kind of oversight at a regional level.
That's interesting. So just paraphrasing, one of the benefits of us having a regulation, if it were permitted for Level 3, could be to kind of pull together the information that the other agencies are receiving.
Correct.
But that would also bring up the need, the liability to do that work, and to do it properly.
Yeah, I'd prefer to the city attorney on that.
Yeah, and, you know, tonight, we have a, it's essentially a zoning ordinance, that's why it's at the Planning Commission. Some of that is like an overlap in health, just general health and safety regulation. So having a committee that would, or a permitting scheme that would require annual certifications at the city is not really zoning. It's, I think it's just general police power and health and safety that the city could have. I would want to look at the overlay with the county's regulation and state regulation to see whether there's some level of preemption where it's duplicative of what is already being done.
Right. Chair, that was one of my questions, which is that, would something that we would be looking at through a CUP that would be monitoring ongoing, which would force us to do that monitoring and to do it properly, right, would that, yeah, be preempted by something anyway? Because it seems like so much of state, of local law or procedures seem to be preempted by others lately, so.
We do have a lot of standard conditions in our use permits that deal with this inter-agency issue, you know. So we have standard conditions for, the fire department requires, we have standard conditions for county environmental health, we have standard conditions for pollution prevention. And so we, in essence, are adopting those standards and requiring that as compliance with those standards as part of our use permit. And so that our impact on that is, if somebody doesn't follow those, we can conduct a proceeding to revoke their use permit. This is the ultimate remedy that the city might be able to employ. And also, if we find out they're not doing it, we can report them to the other agencies. And then they have their own administrative process to create compliance with the rules.
Yeah, and I think another example is, you know, before we maybe issue a stream alteration permit, or a retaining wall permit in a creek, we make sure they get fish and game, or, you know, wildlife. We just make sure that they've obtained the appropriate permits before we issue that kind of final permit to do the work. Or even a new building, make sure they have the FAA clearance for the height, to make sure there's no issue. So I think it'd be more similar to that. We would just be verifying that they've gotten all the appropriate approvals, not that we would deny them or review them, just that they've received them.
Thank you very much. That's all I have.
Good questions, and you took a couple of mine, so thank you. Commissioner Castaneda.
This would be federal law preemption. I'm sensitive to reading that some concerns are, do we want to be precluded from helping out in emergencies? And COVID was mentioned. And so I would like to think that we would be able to help if we could in any national emergency, despite our own local regulations. So the effect of preemption by perhaps state emergency declarations or federal emergency declarations, would these, in fact, operate to be able to allow us to participate in the interests of our health?
Yeah, that's a good question.
Well, that is a good question. And I would, you know, having gone through a few of these emergencies, and one with COVID-19, when there's an emergency, I think there's pretty broad powers that the state and federal government can bring to bear. And I, you know, without really studying specifically how deep that power is. But I mean, my hunch is that we, that a federal or presidential declaration of emergency, whether it's a health emergency or some other emergency, empowers the president or the governor, in the case of the state, to issue orders that are based on protecting public health and safety. And I think that would come within that umbrella, if you will, of public health and safety, if we were talking about some need to address a very specific health issue. And, you know, this hypothetical lab that exists here in San Carlos hypothetically raises its hand and says, yes, we can do that, we're working on that. But, sorry, San Carlos says we can only do bio Level 2, and this would require us to commission a 3. I mean, there might be, if they happen to be very unique, and they're the only people who can do it, I think there'd be some emergency powers that probably would apply. And even then, there's something we could do in response to that, to allow for an amendment to our zoning ordinance if that was required, if as a policy matter, the city felt, oh, yeah, we want to participate in this, solving this problem.
Thank you. That's very helpful.
Commissioner Roof, follow-up?
No more clarifying questions. I'd be interested in the public comment.
Okay. I just, I have one, if we could, and then, like, you'd like to get to hear the, from the public. And if there were a conditional use permit process for 3, could you just remind us how that would work, both in terms of the approval, and then the ongoing check-in enforcement regulation of it? Well, I think we started to get down that path a bit, but maybe you could just give us a quick overview.
Right. So it certainly depends on if that's something the commission would be recommending, your parameters around it, right? So there would need to be findings in order to grant a conditional use permit. So we'd need to develop what those findings are. We don't have typical annual reporting requirements for other conditional use permits. It's more if they're in violation, then that can be enforced. But that is something that could be required as well. And I don't know, Carol, if you saw other examples of conditional use permits?
Thank you, Lisa. The other conditional use permits did not have any unique findings. They just use the general conditional use findings for the jurisdiction. Things like conformance with the general plan, and no detriment to the public health, safety, and so on.
And Greg, did you want to expand on anything?
Yeah, I think that is one approach. But we could develop a special finding for local conditions for granting a conditional use permit, if that's something the commission wanted to look at. And I think that's just how we could approach it. But it is, there is, the traditional statutory, if you will, conditional use permit findings have health and safety consistency of the general plan, general requirements. So within those, we can create facts to tie the findings to the facts of the particular application.
Great, thank you. Nothing else for me. Commissioner Garvey, please.
Thank you, Chair. One question. I'm wondering, oh, I lost it. Oh, it may come back.
Want to come back?
Yeah, it'll come back later. Thank you.
Okay. Vice Chair, please.
Sorry, I had just one follow-up. I think I hear, I hear Lisa and Greg, and probably Al, saying that we don't today have a CUP monitoring program that's active. You know, we know that this would require either staffing or consultant help, potentially. So, and that's one of my concerns about CUPs, which is best intentions, they still don't get monitored actively. So how much work would this entail, or cost?
It could be very significant. I mean, I don't, in fact, I mean, off the top of my head, I don't know how, what the number is of CUPs that we have in San Carlos, but it's, there's quite a few. And they run with the land, so they're historic, right? So they, you know, 10, 15, 20 years ago, we issued them. And so they built up over the years. So there could be dozens, if not, you know, upwards of 100 of these things, or more around town. So I don't know of cities, and you may, but I don't know, at least of the cities that I've worked in, and the cities that we talked to, how many actually have a monitoring program. I don't know of any. But that isn't to say that you could do it. It would most likely be a very significant work effort, administrative task, to do it. What we do do, though, is it runs with the land, and it's a contract with the operator of the business, or, and/or the owner of the property. And if, usually what happens is, there is an oversight program, but it's more informal. And what happens is, someone will complain. They'll say, hey, I know that they have a CUP for their lights, or their, you know, the noise that they make after a certain amount, or a certain time at night, and they're violating that on a regular basis, and we want you to take a look at it. So really, conditional use permits in cities are complaint-based, and that's actually how they get used very effectively in cities. And what the city will do is then do an investigation to verify some of the issues, and we'll talk to the owner, we'll talk to the business, and we'll try and verify the facts of what's occurring. And then that allows the owner or the business to get back into compliance. If they don't, the city has the ability to revoke the conditional use permit.
Thank you, Chair.
Ellen, yes, please.
I'm wondering if it's easier to plan for building a BSL 3 lab when you're just thinking about building the building originally, than it is to retrofit an existing building that didn't have it and try to put it in? I'm wondering if you or somebody on your team can speak to that. And in San Carlos, we have these new buildings coming. Is it easier at that phase to do it, or can one simply retrofit it at any point just as easily?
Yeah, that's the information we've received, is it's difficult to retrofit later. So you want to build the building, assuming that you may want to have a BSL 3 lab in the future. It's most important, I think, for your air handling system and some other methods, that at least a portion of the building be ready to be adapted to a BSL 3 lab. But I believe we have at least one person in the room that has more expertise in that can respond, a public commenter.
Sure. Very good. Commissioner Castaneda? Okay. Why don't we now move over to public comment? And I have, we have one speaker here, Ryan Gabara. Wanted to come on up and introduce yourself, and I'd love to give you a couple of minutes here to share your thoughts.
Hi, guys. Thank you for having me. My name is Ryan Gabara. I'm one of the co-owners of NBC Bio Labs. We are located down on Britton and on industrial in San Carlos. We're a life science incubator. We generally cater to much smaller tenants. So from our business standpoint, I don't know that it really impacts us. We are a BSL 2 laboratory. We don't ever have any plans to ever have a BSL 3 laboratory. And so certainly none of the activities that would exist in one. And so it doesn't really impact our business. However, we are part of a thriving biotech community, and that's very important to me. And we like being a part of San Carlos for that reason. And let me be perfectly clear that if you ban BSL 3 labs, you are making a very clear statement to the market that you don't want biotechnology in San Carlos. And so I think the best way to kind of think about the practicality of what we're considering tonight is how is this applied in the real world? So in the real world, we're going to have a tenant that's 50,000 square feet, 100,000 square feet. They're going to be looking for space. They're going to get a one-page tour sheet that's going to say, okay, we're going to go look at space in South San Francisco, and Foster City, and in San Carlos. What are the pros and cons of each of these cities? I am certain that the banning of a BSL 3 lab with no option to have a BSL 3 lab will be on that list for San Carlos in the con category. So what does that mean? Most of these companies are never going to need a BSL 3 lab. They will never come to you guys and ask for one, if it's conditional use, if it's allowed, doesn't matter, they won't need it. But what that will do is, a company that's 50,000 square feet, that's planning to sign up here for 10 years, that's committing to your city to put their employees in your city, to have people live in your city, they are committing here, and they're going to say, you know, if five years from now, we tweak down this road, we go down this path, and we have absolutely no ability to have a BSL 3 laboratory, we're not going to commit to growing into that city. We're not going to move to that city. So I think that's the fear that you're seeing from the development community and from the life science community, is this is in hugely chilling effect. You heard from the staff report, there are exactly zero cities in the Bay Area that ban BSL 3 labs. So why are we considering that here tonight? That doesn't, that doesn't make any sense. That's not the message that you guys want to send to the market. And I think this is going to have a very drastic impact on the market, and significantly impact your guys' ability to have a successful biotech community within the city. Sorry, I have a few other points. I wanted to answer some questions that were up here. And so I wanted to make sure I answered the questions. So you guys asked about a BSL 3 lab in some locations. I don't have any, I don't have any experience with a BSL 3 lab, but I actually have experience with a BSL 4 lab, which there's very few of those in the United States. I actually go to a vacation town where there is one, and I had Christmas Eve dinner right next to it. There is a house, there's houses 100 yards from the building, not just the, not just the grounds, but the actual building where all of this activity happens. So when you have an elevated BSL level, BSL 3 or BSL 4, and I'm not, nobody knows ever going to do a BSL 4 lab here, so you can ban that all you want. When you have an elevated BSL 3 or BSL 4 level, it's, there's counter-safety measures to help make that safer, right? So if you're doing, if you're doing a BSL 3 experiment, you need a BSL 3 facility to do that. BSL 4 experiment, you need a BSL 4 facility to do that. So these facilities kind of go up, they're lockstep safer than the previous facility, because you're doing more dangerous things in them. So that's the purpose of those regulations. That's why they exist, to make sure that they are safe. So I think my daughter, we were talking earlier, when we were, I sent my daughter to school for a year in Montana, and her preschool was less than a mile from the BSL 4 facility. So just for context. I think you mentioned banning, or what about a BSL 2 lab? If you banned a BSL 2 lab, you might as well just tell life science to go away here, because that would, that's what almost all of the labs are, in terms of a safety level. Somebody asked about retrofitting for a BSL 3 lab. It is possible, it's difficult. Typically speaking, for a BSL 3 lab, the labs that we're talking about, vast majority of the labs are BSL 2 labs, and then you might have a very small component that is a BSL 3 lab. So you might have 50,000 square feet of BSL 2 lab, and within that BSL 2 lab, you might build a small BSL 3 lab for some very specific activity. So it's not as though this whole building is going to be a BSL 3 building, and there's going to be all this stuff. It's just a very small component of a much larger picture. Let's see. So, you know, so anyway, I think kind of, in conclusion, I think you should not regulate BSL 3 labs. I think if you want to ban BSL 4 labs, I think that's fine. I think that if you do go the conditional use route, I think I think that if you do go the conditional use route, I think that's fine. I think the actual practicality of having a lot of people come before you and asking for BSL3 labs is going to be pretty low. You're not going to get a lot of requests for that. But the message you send to the market by banning the BSL3 labs is going to be incredibly detrimental and will be felt throughout the city.
Thank you, Ryan. And before you step down, maybe see if there are any questions for our speaker? No? Yeah? Vice Chair, please.
Thank you. I have a dumb question. Can you give me an example of what might happen at a BS3 lab, BSL3 lab? And was, you know, were the COVID, was the COVID work at a Level 3 lab?
There was some COVID work that was done in a 3 lab, that is true. You're not going to have the really bad agents that we're all familiar with, like Ebola, for instance, is going to be in a BSL4 lab. And so you have, the BSL3 regulations really have much higher safety regulations. You have to have airlocks, you have to have certain types of clothing, you have to have certain, you have to have certain air changes within there, you have to have certain safety features around the backup of air, et cetera. And so they make those, they make those pretty foolproof relative to the type of agents that are in there.
Thank you.
Commissioner Cassini?
I don't suppose you'd have any idea of a cost of a retrofit. You're talking about them being a small area of a lab, so they don't have to be large. I know the other concerns are...
Yeah, I mean, they'd be pretty expensive to implement relative to having, because as was mentioned earlier, you would definitely need new air handling units, you'd have to change some of the construction on the floor, there'd be a lot of different ways that these labs are sealed that are different from any other than a BSL2 lab. And so it's quite an extraordinary undertaking, which is why I think you don't see it happening very often. But I don't want you to mistake that it doesn't happen very often for how important of a conversation we're having tonight, because the banning of it is going to be the issue that you're going to see, and the tenants that won't go here because they don't have that optionality or think they have that optionality.
Thank you. Thank you both. Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair. Ryan, thanks for your remarks. Just a quick follow-up question or comment. It sounds like the BSL3 rooms are very similar to, it reminds me of a semiconductor clean room with the airlocks and the HVAC system and the frequent air changes and the filters. This is all very typical for a clean room in a semiconductor facility. Would you agree with that, or is it a little bit different?
There's some similarities, some not. I mean, you're keeping certain things out, you're keeping certain things out of that room, and in a BSL3 lab, you're keeping things in the room. So a little bit different in that regard. And so those rooms are a little bit easier to kind of pop up, if you will, and a BSL3 lab is not. So I mean, the clean rooms have different ratings, you know, relative to like Clean 1000, et cetera, and I don't know all the regulations around that, because I've never had to deal with that. But it is, there are some similarities relative to it being a very contained unit.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Lynette, why don't we now go to the callers that might be on the Zoom cast or on the phone?
Yes, we have seven hand raised as of now. The first caller is David.
Good evening, David. And if you could limit your comments to two minutes or so, that'd be great.
Yes, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I think, I'm a little concerned that you just gave the previous guy about eight minutes, and you're asking me for two, but go ahead. But I'm going to go ahead anyway. I disagree with him in many ways in terms of the discouraging biotech, if you ban the BSL3s. But anyway, issues I had with this thing is, number one, the Sierra Club has sent in at least two letters to your planning commission over the last three or four months about this. We're adamantly against BSL3s. We even included a video, I don't know if any of you ever saw it or not, but I hope you had a chance to look at it. So certainly Sierra Club is against BSL3s. And the reason is because health and safety, we're concerned that BSL3 labs are generally, among other things that you have to concern about is that they have, they might deal with diseases that are airborne, and that's the ones that are really more difficult to control than some other ones that may be passed by, you know, touching people and so on. And so if they're airborne, and for some reason an earthquake hits and this building gets damaged in some way, and somehow some of that, whatever they're dealing with, COVID or some other new virus has come along, it could easily escape. So we were very much concerned about that. And the proximity of these labs to adjacent residential is a big problem. It was brought up earlier about maybe if they were sent in the middle of a campus, it wouldn't be so much of an issue. But the fact that we're putting these level of labs smack in the middle over a million, maybe a million, maybe 2 million people on the peninsula makes absolutely no sense whatsoever. Why is San Carlos want to control this? The labs themselves, they have lots of controls, I agree with that, but they're mainly concerned about their own facility, and they only control what's in their own facility. The city can control what's outside of their facility, which means how distant they are from other buildings and so on, is part of the zoning code. And I think that's why we want the city to take this on as a separate thing. It's not, nothing to do necessarily with the, you know, there may be the perfect lab in the world, and we get a Level 7.5 earthquake, and God knows what might happen. So that's one of our concerns. Let me see what else we have here. If you want, you talked about conditional use permits. I agree with the conversation so far on that, that if you did commercial use permits, which is a possibility, I think it would be, you absolutely have to want to monitor that 100%, which means you would really need the personnel to do it. I think, you know, the question, I think Al brought it up, that, well, you only deal with these when someone complains. But with a laboratory, the people who are working the laboratory are not going to complain about what's going in their laboratory, it's their lifestyle. And people who are outside of it have no clue if anything's going on in there or not. So I think you'd have to have actual, active monitoring of this, and that means more work for the city. So therefore, by banning them, you eliminate that particular issue entirely. And the other thing is that most of these laboratories that are coming in on San Carlos are speculative laboratories. What's, I can't remember the name of the big company that's doing all of them now. But they're coming in and they're building a 5,000, 5 million square, 5 million, 500,000 square foot building, or even a million square foot building. And they're building a whole bunch of buildings, and then they're trying to see if they can find some people that are going to move into those buildings that are biotech-type people. So to be able to figure ahead who their tenants are going to be, they really don't know who their tenants are going to be. And that's another issue, that is, these tenants move into these buildings, you have to have a monitoring system that you know what tenants are moving in, because you may have someone that was in there, there was a BSL2 lab, and then they move out, a new tenant comes in, and they say, I'm going to do BSL3. And unless someone tells you or lets you know about that, you don't know. So there's a lot of issues about this, and the simplest thing in the world, I think, is to just ban the BSL3s. It seems to be not a big deal in terms of the number of them that are around in the area, and it is a real safety issue potentially, because we live in earthquake area, and also some of these projects are being built in sea level rise areas, which doesn't make any sense at either. So I definitely agree with the staff recommendation, let's ban BSL3s. Thank you very much. And sorry, thank you for giving me the extra time.
Yes, thank you, David. Next caller, Lynette.
Next caller is Debbie and Gary.
Okay, yeah.
Wait, wait.
Good evening, Debbie. We can hear you.
This is Gary first.
Gary, I'm a resident of San Carlos, and thanks to staff for drafting the ordinance that will ban bio level, bio safety Level 3 and 4 labs in San Carlos. These labs perform research on life-threatening pathogens that have no place in densely populated residential neighborhoods surrounding them. We submitted a public comment letter that contained numerous photos that I took that showed flooding in the east and northeast of San Carlos on December 31st and the first week of January. Most of these areas either have bio labs on site or will have them in the future. What are the consequences of flooding in bio Level 3 and 4 sites? They could lose electrical power, water and sewer services. Employees may be unable to access the building and unable to care for the animals on the site. The ventilation systems could also fail, that would allow deadly pathogens to escape. Now, some policymakers may oppose the ban and decide to allow BSL3 and 4 labs by considering conditional use permits. However, the city does not have a biosafety committee or any ordinances that would govern the installation and monitoring of these labs. The cost of establishing these committees, passing new ordinances, and conducting oversight seem extreme. Who's going to pay for that? We don't think it's fallen on taxpayers. So please approve the opposed ordinances banning Levels 3 and 4 labs in San Carlos. Labs like this do not belong in FEMA flood zones and along our creeks. The risks are way too great. Thank you. I'll give my time left over to Kim.
And I'd like to join Gary in thanking the staff for their report, and we strongly support the recommendation to prohibit Level 3 and 4 labs in San Carlos. We would like to clarify whether the labs are prohibited in all zoning, including planned development zoning. That was not mentioned in the report. We note that the labs at 405 Industrial and 642 Quarry were rezoned from landmark commercial and light industrial to planned development. We wrote a detailed letter opposing a BSL Lab 3 at the 642 Quarry Road site. Fortunately, that developer withdrew their request for Level Use, or Level 3 use at this site. That site is one example of one that frequently floods, and we included photos in our first public comment letter showing that there's a long history of widespread flooding in east and northeast San Carlos, where most of the labs will be located. We are concerned that some members of the planning commission, it seems like almost all of you, are opposed to banning the recommendation for 3 and 4 labs. We're astonished by that. Al Sivay, who's our economic developer, in conjunction with our city staff, noted that this involves less than 1% of future tenants, and the price to prepare guidelines and oversight does not seem worth that small percentage. There are no BSL Lab 4s in the whole state, so the idea that you wouldn't ban those outright is surprising. We hope that the links that we provided in our first comment letter, including comments by the National Institute of Health's National Safety Advisory Board for Biosecurity, is persuasive. These are experts in biosafety and biosecurity. They are Stanford professors. They talk about the real problem of private labs in Silicon Valley that have no oversight. In addition, I have spoken with city council members in Cambridge, Massachusetts, and their public health director, and they are also astonished that California, the state that is known for protecting the environment and its citizens, have no cities with oversight and committees that monitor it. We do not think that 1% of projected BSL3 lab tenant use justifies the tremendous risk. In addition, we're opposed to this alternative because allowing these labs, even with the set of ordinances and guidelines, will create a dangerous condition as defined by California Civil Code 835.2 and subject the city to liability. The city has actual notice of widespread flooding and sea level rise in the future on or near the sites of the most, of most proposed life sciences developments. And as I said, we included photos documenting that. So please, I implore you, read what the experts have to say in the links that we provided. Listen to the National Institute of Health. Hear their concerns about unregulated private labs in San Carlos. Then you don't have to worry about what citizens have to say and what our opinions are, you're hearing from the expert. The kind of organisms in these labs are life-threatening pathogens, SARS, COVID. What happens during a flood? When their negative and positive pressure air ventilation systems fail? What happens? What happens when the parking lots are flooded and the EVs are flooded? Staff cannot reach the labs to access the animals. In addition, it was either ABAG or CCAG that said for every one professional employee in a biosafety lab or a commercial development, there are four unskilled workers. There is an extreme labor shortage in our area and not enough housing. So where are the low-income earners going to live that care for the animals?
Hello, Debbie.
And care for the labs? Yes, sir?
Can I just check? If you could please wrap up your comments?
Certainly, I will. But I would notice that Ryan Gabara, who is a developer and who has a financial interest in providing lab space for tenants, was allowed to speak for eight minutes. And he was considered a member of the public, yet the planning commission asked him questions if he was an expert.
Yes, Debbie, I understand. Could you, would love to hear your points, please? Thank you.
Thank you for considering our comments, and we strongly support Al Sivay's comments and the city staff's recommendation to ban Level 3 and 4 labs in San Carlos for public health and safety and environmental safety. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next caller, please, Lynette.
Next caller is Stephen.
Good evening, Stephen. And if you could focus your comments and keep them to a few minutes, that'd be great.
I'll do my best. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Excellent. So first of all, I wanted to applaud city staff and this commission for leading the way on this new and complicated land use issue that's facing the entire Bay Area. I am a member of the Sierra Club, and we have formed a working group specifically to look into life sciences and biotech. The reason why is because we're seeing them popping up all over the place in the Bay Area and not really understanding what they are or what they do, but seeing that cities are rushing to embrace them to offset the loss of office revenue. So we took a look, and we tried to find regulations that were local and found very, very few. We've got experience in South San Francisco, but not so much in other cities. So we looked further, and we found basically the birthplace of biotech and life science is Massachusetts. So we, what we did is we looked for precedence over there. We went to the East Coast, and we found experts on land use, on permitting, and we've invited them to actually give a webinar. And that webinar is called Planning for Life Sciences Development in Bay Area Communities. It's going to be March 2nd. Hopefully, you guys have all gotten the save the date email. But the webinar is intended as a guide for municipal leaders to better understand the life sciences and biotechnology industry, how these facilities operate, and what leaders can do to position their communities for successful biotech development. Decision-makers and agency staff will hear from experts from the East Coast as well as California on what issues need to be considered for successful development of projects in their communities. Various cities can learn about critical early planning considerations for life science development projects, the biosafety guidelines that regulate labs, and measures useful to protect communities and the environment. Everybody on this commission is, of course, invited, and we hope you'll come. There has been a lot of stuff going back and forth, and it's almost impossible to try to answer it all here, just with a quick two-minute comment. But we'll do our best to touch on and give as much pertinent information as area local leaders and cities need to be able to make well-informed decisions regarding life science. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. And I did receive your save the date, and thank you for putting it in at least my inbox. Lynette, our next caller, please.
Next caller is Kristi.
Good evening, Kristi. Welcome, and you have the floor. And if you could limit your comments to a few minutes, that'd be great. And if you could limit your comments to a few minutes, that'd be great. Kristi?
Kristi, you need to unmute.
Thank you. Sorry. Sorry about that.
No problem. Good evening.
Good evening. I thought I hit it. I'm Kristi Sharilla. I'm Biocom California's Bay Area Policy Manager. Biocom California is the state's oldest and largest association for the life sciences, advocating on behalf of 1,700 members. We submitted a comment letter on this item on Friday. Life science is the economic backbone of the peninsula. San Mateo County is home to 807 life science establishments, employing 40,349 people at an average wage of $274,258. The life science industry in San Mateo County represents $14.1 billion in annual economic impact. This is not just a question of economic value. These companies are developing lifesaving treatments and cures for all human ailments, improving health outcomes and quality of life. The industry is very highly regulated and has a high rate of compliance because of the staff that our companies employ to ensure conformity. There is a comprehensive permitting process. The facilities are actively monitored and are inspected regularly. And in the event of an emergency, these facilities have safety measures that isolate any risks to protect both employees and the public. The BSL designation itself outlines the requirements to create a safe environment, both within and outside the lab. Sorry. We support the staff recommendation to allow BSL 1 and BSL 2 by right in the San Carlos Innovation District. It is also reasonable to not allow BSL 4 uses in San Carlos as these labs are generally limited to governmental entities. The use of a BSL 3 lab is rare, but their use is necessary in certain lifesaving research processes. We are not aware of any other jurisdiction that disallows BSL 3 completely. This policy could limit economic and job growth. Its very existence could give companies who don't currently have plans for a BSL 3 lab pause when deciding whether to locate in the city. It is our suggestion that the city considers a conditional use permit process for BSL 3. We welcome the opportunity to meet with anyone who would like additional information about biosafety levels and the regulations in place around laboratory operations. Thank you.
Thank you, Kristi. I appreciate your comments. And Lynette, our next caller, please.
Our next caller is Paul.
Good evening, Paul. Welcome. Thank you for taking some time this evening. And if you could limit your comments to a few minutes, that'd be great.
Yes, thank you. And thank you, planning commission, for hearing my comments. My name's Paul Maginetti. I'm a board member of the GESC Neighborhood Association. Several months ago, I posed some basic questions to this body. How will the location of a biosafety lab be determined? How will the proper design and operation of a biosafety lab be verified? How will procedures addressing biohazard safety be documented? And who will follow them? How will the release of a biological agent be prevented? How will the release of a biological agent be detected? That's a really problematic question. What will the disaster response be to the release of a biological agent? How will the proper decommissioning of a biosafety lab be assured at a future date? If you don't know the answers to these questions, you are making an uninformed decision. Serious gaps in regulation of BSL 3 labs exist. The CDC's standard biosafety in microbiological and biomedical laboratories is an advisory document only. It is not intended as a regulation. Private commercial BSL 3 labs are not subject to regulations or oversight that publicly-funded BSL 3 labs must comply with. Their location is frequently not disclosed. The NIH's own biosecurity advisors are advising tighter regulation of BSL 3 labs. Given the magnitude of the risk, it is not wise to permit building of BSL 3 labs until there is a concrete action plan in the event that the unthinkable happens. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Paul. Appreciate your comments this evening. Lynette, I think we have one or a couple more callers.
Yes, we have three more. The next caller is Jeff.
Thank you. Good evening, Jeff. Welcome, and thanks for taking some time this evening. You have the floor. And if you could limit your comments to a few minutes, that'd be great.
I'm watching the timer. My name is Jeff Maile. I'm also a member of the GESC board. And I appreciate the staff report on suggesting that BSL 3 and 4 labs are prohibited. You know, there's a lot of talk about the economic impact of that and whether or not that will sour biotech from bringing those kinds of labs and facilities to San Carlos. And I'll be honest, while I get that, I kind of think maybe that's all right. You know, I think everyone in this room, everyone who has the ability to vote on this should ask themselves, how would you feel living next to one of these labs? You know, how far away is far enough away? You know, we talk a lot about safety controls and conditional use permits and monitoring and routine checkups. But, you know, when the unthinkable happens, and it does often, just ask Turkey and Syria, you know, that's not really very helpful to say, oh, they passed all their compliance checks. I'm very concerned about labs processing, you know, dangerous toxins, you know, anywhere near where my family lives. And I think everyone else feels the same way, at least I assume. So I'm simply asking everyone to look inside themselves and really ask yourself, how close would you feel comfortable living to some of these labs? Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you, Jeff. Lynette, our next caller, please.
Next caller is Jennifer.
Hello, Jennifer. Thank you for joining us tonight. You have the floor. And if you could take a couple minutes, that'd be great.
Yeah, my name is Jennifer, and I am also a GESC board member. As you know, there are residences that are very close on the greater east side of San Carlos as to this proposed purple area. Just a little note, the presentation was very blurry for us Zoom people, so I see it in your packet. But from what I'm looking at, it's within, I don't know, less than a block from where I live, and I'm not as far out as the last speaker was. So it's probably really close to where he lives. So I would applaud also the staff for this report and making this recommendation. I'm speaking in support of this ordinance prohibiting BSL 3 and 4 in San Carlos. I agree with our Sierra Club members and the other speakers who spoke in support of this, so I will not repeat what they have said. But there is a lot of worry that I have with the sea level rise, with the flooding, with what Paul said, all of those questions that need to be answered, as well as the oversight that would need to happen, and the liability and cost to San Carlos, the city of San Carlos, which I think is a major issue. I just did a quick Google search, and it looks like you can easily find where some biolevel safety 3 places are in California and throughout the United States if you just Google it. And almost all of them look like they're on campuses. They're on university campuses. They're on biotech campuses that are secluded from residential areas. So San Carlos is unique because we do have residential areas backing right up to this. So I think that that's something that would need to be looked at closely if this commissioning, planning commission tries to push back on this recommendation. In addition, I would just like to suggest that the planning commission is put in place by the city council, and we elect the city council. So I would hope that you would listen very carefully to our residents and prioritize the health and safety of the residents and the voters here. In addition, the economic impact to our community will not be a big deal. There are developers just drooling to develop all of this very, very small amounts of land we have here in basically the east side of San Carlos. So as a planning commission, you can say what they need to do, and they will do it because they want to develop here. So again, I suggest that you listen to the residents and the Sierra Club and people and the experts and educate yourself further on this before you push back on city staff. Because city staff has done their homework on this, and I would ask you to approve their motion. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Appreciate your thoughts this evening. And Lynette, we have, I think, another caller.
We have two more. Next caller is Anna.
Good evening, Anna. Welcome. Thank you for taking some time this evening. And you have the floor.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I'm Anna, longtime resident of San Carlos. I live in the greater east side. And I just want to echo what Jen just said, and Jeff, and Debbie, and Gary, and the Sierra Club members. This is just, even the thought of allowing BSL Level 3 or 4, I can't even believe that it's actually considered so close to residential areas. And I do have concerns, not only as a resident, but also for the people that don't live so close to here. This can affect everybody in San Carlos. In addition, with the risk of earthquake and flood, as we've just seen in the last couple of months with all the rains that we've had, I don't even understand how development like this could even be considered with the rising sea levels and the flooding. So please, just listen to the staff report. Thank you, staff, for the report. Appreciate all of your hard work and time that was put into it. Thank you, Al Savay. So please, just don't allow anything above BSL 1 or 2 levels. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Anna. Our next caller, Lynette.
Our next caller is Dmitry.
Thank you. Good evening, Dmitry. Welcome. The floor is yours. And if you could take a few minutes, that'd be great.
Sure. Yeah, I want to thank all the folks providing public comment, the residents of our community who have put in a tremendous amount of effort, putting in the research into this. You know, one thing I haven't heard, I wasn't at the meeting in the beginning, there are only 13 BSL Level 4 facilities in the entire United States. And those are, BSL 4 is considered dangerous and exotic, aerosol-transmitted infections. We're talking about things like Ebola and Marburg viruses. So 4 should be, you know, shouldn't even be considered. It's kind of crazy. And for BSL 3, which is, numerous speakers have spoken out against it. I think that there's no question that unless the city is completely prepared and really understands what's going on, and we have an infrastructure in place, we really shouldn't be considering Level 3 as well. Now, if we're talking about conditional use permits, as a potential way to allow for BSL Level 3, then we have to put some very strict guidelines to that, and it would have to be an open process where every citizen in San Carlos would be informed so people could understand what type pathogens might be involved in retrofitting a space for a BSL Level 3. So I think that there's a lot of effort needs to be put in place if you would consider doing anything at a BSL Level 3 level. And the community as a whole should consider whether or not they think it's acceptable. So I just want to thank the folks who've put in the effort and have done the research. And it's great to live in a community where people are actively involved. Those are my comments. Thanks.
Thank you, Dmitry. And Lynette, are there other hands raised?
There are no more hand raised.
Okay, very good. I'd entertain a motion to close public comment.
I will move that we close the public comment period.
Second that.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Cherry Akapony?
Yes, thank you.
Through the chair, I think there was one public comment staff would like to respond to.
Yes, please.
And I don't know if there's any others. But I think one public commenter asked about, could it be permitted in a PD zone and where is it currently proposed to be prohibited? So as written, we took a look at all the zoning regulations where research and development are allowed. And so that's where all the BSL 3 labs are proposed to be prohibited, is wherever you would be able to have research and development. In the PD zone, we establish site-specific regulations, height, floor area, but we can only allow uses that are permitted or conditional in the city. So we cannot pull in a prohibited use with a PD. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Great, that's really helpful. Thank you. We have, Jan, please.
Chair, I just had a question. A couple of commenters talked about private labs versus government labs. Can anyone clarify, are private labs subject to the same county, state, and federal regulations as government labs? Or are there two completely different regulatory structures?
Same. However, I do believe that there's a distinction as it relates to companies that might have NIH funding. So if there is a private company that's funded by the NIH, then they actually have to follow some of these guidelines under the NIH and the CDC. But all of the other, the county and the state, are all the same.
Thank you. Helpful. Great, thank you. Well, we've had a lot of great input from the public, both written and appreciate everyone's comments tonight, both here in the room and online. So it would be great to hear your thoughts. We can maybe start with Commissioner Roof and kind of work our way down and see where we head with this this evening.
Sure. Well, I definitely appreciate and listened very closely to all the comments and studied the written comments that were submitted. And I kind of feel like we've got to weigh the risk that, and there may be some San Carlos specific elements to that risk, against the value of having that kind of work done here. And that 1% economic may be the least of our concern, but the image we project as a city and how we oversee the industry. And perhaps most important for me is the opportunity to have research into potentially lifesaving technologies. This could be an important part of that. And so there's a very small risk that something could go wrong. There's also a risk that if we shut it off, that we lose the opportunity to bring advancements that are important for society. And we certainly know that there are real risks with our limitations in controlling COVID, et cetera. So I'm trying to balance these things. And I'm coming down on that I'm a little hesitant to have an across-the-board ban because of how that would come across and because of the negative side of it. But on the other hand, I'm not ready to say yes yet for anything unless I knew more specifics. And that's why I am honing in on the idea of a conditional use process if a company wants to bring forward that kind of work. As far as the city being able to handle that, we often require applicants to pay for resources to allow the city to investigate something that applies for trees, for any number of things where we don't pretend to have expertise in the city, but there are solutions for that. So I would land on the conditional use for BSL 3. As several people pointed out, BSL 4 is really not even relevant, but so a ban there could be, would be fine in my mind. could be, would be fine in my mind. So, those are my initial thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Castaneda?
I, of course, could not support level four. I think that the report that we received, and the comments that we heard from ALSAV, point out to me that we have had people who have tried to wrestle with weighing the risks that you brought up, Commissioner. And they came down on the side of not allowing either three or four. I think, listening to the comments of the public, and looking at the letters, I think there are good reasons to support that. There are good reasons to look at the issues of having these labs near major public transportation arteries in flood zones. These have all been mentioned. And so, I think I could see supporting the resolution as it is written. But I wonder if we should look at it in terms of, first of all, the ban on the lab itself versus the agents. I have no idea whether there would be laboratories who would not be using agents that would be classified as three, that would prefer to build a class three lab in any event, which would be safer. So, should it be phrased in terms of the vectors versus the labs? And I think I could also support a conditional use for level three, but I think it would have to be very narrowly tailored. And I haven't got thoughts on how to do that as yet, but it would have to be something that would be very narrowly tailored. And I'm concerned about our ability then to monitor it the way that it should be monitored.
Great, thank you. Vice Chair Clements?
Thank you, Chair. Well, this is a hard one, because the topic is very technical, and it's very understandable that there is concern over health and safety. And so, as my other commissioner colleagues have said, I think we have to balance the concern over health and safety versus, you know, what we are trying to create here in terms of a bit of a biotech hub, and other business opportunities. There are a couple of comments that really resonated with me, which was, one of the speakers from the public said, you know, "If there is a choice, you should be prioritizing health and safety." But at the same time, I fully, you know, agree with, to the extent of my knowledge, the idea that unless one plans for kind of systems in advance, it would be impossible later to either quickly approve a level three lab, and have it be, you know, have the existing space be retrofitted, and then come online in case of an emergency. That didn't sound like it may be physically possible, even if we all wanted to do that. And, you know, the business reputation of the city wanting to be, to work with proposed developers, however, you know, again, we don't have to take everything that comes to us or not. We can be choosers. So, I have to say, this is a difficult one. The, you know, if I were to, obviously, four should be banned. I think bio safety level three labs with a very active CUP monitoring program that was strict, and could be paid for by the applicant, I guess I'd be interested to see if that sounded feasible, if the costs involved would be plausible, and, you know, would anyone in the market think that that could, you know, that was an okay cost to take on, just for the option of using the space differently in the future? That said, I really appreciate the additional knowledge that the public brought to the conversation, and the research, the information about Cambridge, and what, you know, what their committee does. I do think that the Civil Code, Section 835.2, that was cited, is not correct, because that pertains to public property, but I guess I'd like to hear Greg's opinion on that. But, you know, this is a complicated issue that we're taking on, so I can see it both ways, frankly. But, you know, my first reaction is, I don't want to be the community to ban anything if it was out of fear, not out of facts. So, that's where I am right now. Could I ask for that clarifying question with the attorney? Hi, Greg.
Yeah, sure. You're correct. Government Code, Section 835.2 and 835 refer to dangerous conditions on public property. You know, generally, the claims I've seen over the years are infrastructure claims, like sidewalks, dangerous intersections, things that are not, were not necessarily designed, because there's lots of immunities that go with dangerous conditions in public property from cities. But in general, I think that, I agree that private development is not a dangerous condition on public property, just because the council or the commission approves a project. It's a project on private property, not public property.
Commissioner Garvey?
Thank you, Chair. Thank you to all the commenters. That was a good slate of comments this evening, and I took a lot of notes, and I appreciated everyone's comments. I'm supportive of allowing BSL one and two, and I'm supportive of banning BSL four. I want to echo Commissioner Roof's comments when he talked about weighing the risk of BSL three versus the value that may be gained from allowing life-saving technologies that may impact our health to happen here in San Carlos. I too am on the fence with BSL three. One of the things that's bubbling to the top for me is supporting a conditional use permit process that has strict monitoring, and I think one of the commenters mentioned an open process. One of the things that I like about a conditional use permit process is it gives us an opportunity to look at each of these developments on a case-by-case basis, and put, and debate that on the merits, and put in the conditions that are strict for that particular development. That's bubbling to the top for me. I could support a ban on BSL three with possibly something like a commitment to revisit this issue in nine months or a year, to see if we've in fact made the right decision, and decided to be an outlier, and completely ban it. How did that work? And is it worth continuing to learn, or possibly revisiting that decision? Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. And my, you know, I think my comments would touch on all of what you said. And I think I'd first start with echoing the thanks to staff and to Al for working through this on relatively short notice. This is a, it is a bit more complex, and quite different than the kinds of things we've, we usually touch on. And I also appreciate that it's sort of responsive to where we are in time. In other words, we have a lot of development in the wings, and I think folks are looking for cues as to where San Carlos is going to shake out on this. So, thanks for moving it forward, and putting it here in front of us tonight. I am, I would also reiterate, I'm supportive of approval of levels one and two as written, and I am absolutely supportive of banning four as written. And I'm also on the fence on three. And I, you know, the notes I just jotted down here, I don't feel like I know enough to make a permanent ban on level three, and what more would I, don't I know about? I really don't appreciate what are the added level of risks of level three organisms, pathogens, what have you, against the environment that level three design is required. And like, when you go up to level three in organism, do you go up like a whole other level beyond that in terms of safety in the design and implementation? And therefore, it not only offsets the risk, but it goes well beyond that. I just, I'm not smart enough at this point to know. And I think the second thing is, I can't appreciate what a monitoring program would entail. I respect Al's comments that it would be expensive, and yet, if we only have one of these as a possibility, how might want the city monitor this facility, when, for the duration, that that level three facility is in place? And could one of the conditions be that whoever gets the CUP pays for that monitoring? So, because I have all of these questions, I actually appreciated Commissioner Garvey's thought of either conditional use, or some more work to be done to define what a conditional use program might look like, and help us, as a commission, as a residents of a city, learn more about these trade-offs that we're being asked to make. Because I just don't feel like I'm equipped to make, it feels premature to make a ban, for me, and it feels premature to say, yep, let's go ahead, because we know what we're getting into when it comes to a CUP. So, that's an awful lot of, I don't know. But I yield to follow-up from others.
One additional thought on the BSL three facility standards that the CDC has developed, and are used across the country. I haven't heard evidence of those being inadequate. So, I haven't heard too many BSL three accidents that led to people dying, or even causing trouble that gets in the news. Of course, we do hear a lot about infectious disease being a detriment. But if there was deficiencies in those rules, where we feel like, as a city, we should override those, and say, no, those aren't adequate in our judgment, then I'd want to hear about it. But I haven't so far. We don't get the last word here, the city council does, so if somebody has examples, they could bring them there. But that was an additional point that I wanted to make.
Yeah, thank you. I would put that on my list of things I would want to know before making that call, as an example. Vice Chair Clements?
Thank you. I think we're starting to coalesce around the need for more information and greater understanding. And so, we could potentially make a motion asking for the issue to come back with additional information, and make that be the motion before we're willing to move forward with any recommendation to the city council, because they're going to want the same information, is my guess, as we have been pondering. And so, I hear Commissioner Roof asking whether the CDC guidelines are inadequate, do we have some indications that additional guidelines would fill some gap? And the chair asking about additional analysis of risks for, yeah, what bio level three labs would handle? And so, what would the risks be to the community? What kinds of risks, and how, you know, the frequency, the seriousness and frequency, is how I think about it. So, and I would, I would like more information just about both the costs of what could be involved in monitoring proactively a CUP every six or 12 months, and the advisability of setting up a committee, and cost of setting up a committee if we really think that it might be useful moving forward, or whether that maybe is not useful, because it's only going to be one or two other, you know, circumstances that would warrant it. And then finally, what would the, what would the business impact be? And get some kind of weigh-in as to whether that is a realist, if it costs $50,000 to monitor every year, does that just do away with any kind of business benefit that we thought, that we would be getting by saying yes, if? So, I'd like to have that information.
Maybe, thank the vice chair, and I like what you're suggesting, maybe see if staff has a bias. One would be to defer action on this, and ask for, over the next, you know, 30 days, more work? Or a approval of what you've written, but only a temporary ban on BSL three with a finite, like with a half-life, and a request to revisit whether that's permanent or not at some point in the future with more work.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I think we like your first option the best, to come back with additional information. And just to clarify, all of it sounds reasonable. What about the, what I'm hearing a little bit is that there's a general interest in exploring this idea of a conditional use permit for BSL three. When we come back, do you want us to come back with that option for your consideration, with these other bits of data that you're asking for?
Well, I would, speaking for me only, yes. And I think what would be of interest to me would be, what would the condition be? How would, let's say, the health and safety portion of that condition be written specifically, so that it would give us some comfort that we're looking after the citizens of San Carlos, but also not banning something? So, that'd be. But can I just ask if others have a reaction to, please?
Well, I wouldn't necessarily say that you'd have to come back with a recommendation for conditional use. Again, the weighing process would take place, and you'd be giving us more information about what you were weighing. And if you came back still with that recommendation to not allow it, that seems to me that would be a possible outcome as well.
Thank you.
Chair, if I could make a suggestion, would it, well, actually ask a question. Would it be helpful for us to make a motion with the additional information that is requested, so that it's on the record what the analysis would look like? And then we could decide, yes, that looks like about the right set of information?
Can I, just through the chair, can I, we don't really need a motion for you to give us direction, and I think, just to underline what Al was saying, I'm hearing, what I'm hearing is, you'd like to see what a conditional use permit option for a BSL three lab might be, what the findings might be that you would be wanting to look at for such a use permit, and also, some more information about, as was suggested, about what a BSL lab three is, what's their safety record, what types of conditions would we need to have some more assurance on public safety? And then, not take away the option as originally recommended, but bring you both options, so that way, you can make a final decision when we can bring it back to you.
I would support that.
I would support that as well.
I would too.
Me too.
I would too, but also to capture any business benefit, or... I would too, but also to capture any business benefit or lack thereof by the additional costs involved in the CUP. So the costs, the business, the risks, the CDC guidelines, and whether there are, there's the need for additional. And, you know, a proposed, not to make you do a lot of work to propose a whole program, and then we may or may not go forward with it, but, you know, what that might look like. Given the comments, I agree with the transparency conversation for the community as well.
And through the Chair, one more suggestion. What we typically do after you've closed the public hearing, when you want to, when you want to come back with something, is we ask you to reopen the hearing so that all the members of the public will be able to continue to comment on whatever new ideas or concepts come forward. And so the public will have an opportunity to comment further at your next meeting when we bring this back.
That's a great suggestion, and you're guiding to do that now.
We would want to do that before, we want to, we're, continue to a date certain and reopen the public hearing.
Very good.
Because we need to, in order to do that, we have to have a date that we're continuing it to. Are we thinking in two weeks or two meetings? Okay, well, we just were discussing potential dates and noticing, because we're going to add this new layer of discussion, we feel it'd be prudent to re-notice anyway. So, but we're still asking you to continue to a date certain, reopen the hearing and continue to March 6. That's the day we think we can bring it back to you.
That sounds, that sounds very good. And so with that, I would motion to continue to a date certain of March 6 and also to reopen the public comment period.
I second that motion.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Roof?
Yes.
Commissioner Castaneda?
Yes.
Commissioner Garvey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Clements?
Yes.
And Chair Yakupony?
Yes. Thank you, staff, appreciate that. And again, to all the members of the public who spoke tonight, we really appreciate your Our next agenda item, reports, correspondence, and general information. And Item A is report on recent city council actions.
Thank you, Chair. At the January 23 city council hearing, the city council adopted the 2023 to 2031 housing element. It has been sent to HCD for certification. And at that time, the council also adopted the associated zoning ordinance amendments. The other item of note is the council, on the same night, heard an appeal for 703 Null Drive. And you'll remember that was an addition that the Planning Commission heard at the end of 2022. The Planning Commission approved the project, and this was appealed to council. Council denied the appeal, thereby upholding the Planning Commission's decision approving the project again.
Very good, thank you. Item B, Planning and Transportation Commission comments or reports. Commissioners, have you comments or reports? None? Okay, very good. C, correspondence?
The Planning Division received several letters regarding the public hearing item this evening. Copies of those were emailed to the Planning Commission and also available here in chambers.
Thank you, and appreciate your helping pass all of those out, and we'll, I for one, will hang on to them for our next session. And then D, planning staff comments, reports, and updates of current projects.
Just a few brief updates. As of now, we do not have any items scheduled for the 21st of February, which is a Tuesday meeting. We'll, of course, let you know probably within the next day or two, just to confirm that there are no items for that hearing and therefore will likely be canceled. Also, wanted to let you know that the downtown specific plan workshop is scheduled for February 15th at 7:00 p.m. It is a virtual community workshop, and more information can be found about that and the specific plan as a whole at sancarlosdowntownplan.com. And then finally, I'd like to invite Lisa Costa-Sanders, Principal Planner, who's going to provide a brief update about 808 Alameda de Las Polgas.
Thank you. I just wanted to let you know the public review and comment period on the draft DIR closed, and we received about 56 written comments in addition to the comments that we received at the Planning Commission meeting. So the consultant team is currently working through those comments. Once we have them all organized and the contact information redacted, we will be posting them to the project webpage online so that anybody can see them. And that also helps verify if, make sure we didn't miss anybody's comment. The comments were very similar to what you heard at the meeting, the similar range of concerns expressed. So thank you.
Thank you, Lisa. Very good. Anything else? Okay, with that, this evening's meeting is adjourned. Thank you.